I'm going to hand it right to Mike.
Sure, so we're going to call the conditional use hearing for the Phoenixville area school district to order. I'm going to go through a couple of things. First, I'll go through the township exhibits. I'll introduce the application generally, talk about what the applicant, the district, needs to establish before us, and then we can ask any questions of them, request if there's anyone here who wants party status, and then move forward with our night. So, in terms of township exhibits, we have exhibit T1, which is the conditional use application, and that will include the site plan that was provided, the building pictures that were provided, the engineering report, the appraisal, and the historical report that was submitted by the applicant. Exhibit T2 is the notice of the initial hearing that was set for this application. It was originally set for January 6th. We, of course, then had the snow event and had to push it and continue it to tonight. Exhibit T3 is the website printout of the notice being posted on the township's website. Exhibit T4 is the notice of the hearing as being rescheduled till tonight. Exhibit T5 is the township engineer review letter dated October 11th, 2024. Exhibit T6 are the planning commission minutes with the recommendation that the application be approved. Those are from October 31st, 2024, I believe. Exhibit T7 are the historical commission minutes from October 21st, 2024, in which they also recommend approval of the application with the condition or caveat that the building 75 plaque be moved to the new building as it's constructed. And then exhibit T8 is the letter from the Chair of the Historical Commission dated December 31st, 2024, I'm sorry, dated October 22nd, 2024, confirming that recommendation from the Historical Commission. Those are all the township exhibits to get us started. I'll next ask whether there's anyone in the audience other than the applicant who wants to be a party to this matter. Being a party gives you the opportunity to introduce your own witnesses or evidence, question and cross-examine the district as the applicant, and if you disagree with the decision that's ultimately rendered by this board, you can take an appeal of it up to the court of comment, please. If you're just here to make public comment, you don't need to be a party to do that. We'll accept public comment at the end of the application. And if you have any questions about what party status means, please let me know. With that being said, is there anyone here who would like to be a party to the proceeding? Okay, indicating none, so we'll move on next to just a general explanation of the relief that's been requested by the district. They own the parcel at 106 Spartan Way. It contains on it a historic Class 1 or Class 2 historic resource. They're proposing to demolish it under section 370-55B of our ordinance. It requires a conditional use application to do so. That's what we're here for tonight. This has already gone before the Township Planning Commission and Township Historical Commission, which I noted have provided their recommendations. Under 370-55, the applicant, the district, merely has to establish that, number one, they've submitted a written report about the historical significance of the building; two, that they've provided a certified property appraisal, which was included in their application; three, they have to touch and address on whether the demolition will adversely affect the historical significance of any neighboring historic properties; and then next, they have to establish whether there's any other feasible or reasonable use of the property considering the potential adaptive reuses and/or the cost of making it into any of those uses. That's what our ordinance requires, of course, and then we have general conditional use criteria that the applicant has to meet and satisfy. But we'll, I think at this point, it's probably best to turn it over to the applicant to have whoever is going to be their representative sworn in and then walk us through the relief that's requested, and then we can entertain any questions from the board and keep us moving that way.
My name is Ken Gibson. I'm the Director of Operations and Technology for the district. I've brought Nicole, I'm sorry Nicole, I forget your last name.
I'm Nicole Schwenk. I'm from Gorski Engineering.
Nicole, can you spell your last name for the court reporter?
Sure. S-C-H-W-Y-N-K.
Gorski, G-O-R-S-K-I.
Correct.
Ken, can you, I see you have a big plan there. Can you walk us through the relief you're requesting and, or maybe Nicole can, kind of hit on those different elements I mentioned that are under the ordinance? And Nicole, why don't we have you sworn in as well?
Can I use your name, please? You swear from, that's where your basket will be. Yes, thank you. Would you like your logo?
I can act as a video.
And go ahead and grab the mic. Because otherwise it won't go on the video recording.
What we're proposing to do is, in this location right here on the property, there's an existing building. It's deteriorating. It would actually cost more money to do the repairs on the building than to just tear it down and rebuild. We do have an engineering report that Jerry Gorski did. I don't know if you have copies to it, but I do have extra copies with me. He did a report basically about the current existing conditions of the building.
Nicole, can you kind of summarize what those existing conditions are for the board?
Sure. The foundation walls are basically deteriorating. They're kind of cracking. There's signs of shifting. There's vertical and horizontal cracking going on in them. The roof is in disrepair. There's actually a pretty substantial hole in the roof where it just lets the conditions in, so of course it's rotted out the wooden frame of the building. So, the walls are kind of collapsing. Most of the doors don't work like the man doors because of the wooden frame bending. The windows don't open. I think the only doors that do work are the overhead garage doors. The heater system's in disrepair. It doesn't work. The electrical doesn't work in the building because, of course, the weather conditions hitting everything. It's kind of knocked that, those systems out.
And I think some of the pictures depict... Oh, I'm sorry. I think some of the pictures that were presented depict graffiti on the inside. Is that an issue that the district's having to deal with?
Yes, there are, I guess, students trespassing and getting into the building. So, I mean, it is kind of a safety issue too, because if something happens, something collapses on somebody in the building, it's going to, of course, be an injury. That said, what we're looking to do is replace the building with a 50 by 70, 300 and, or 3,500 square foot building. Instead of it being lengthwise, we are turning it so that they can get more bays along the front of the building.
What's the expectation as to what that would be used for, the new building?
It would be used for maintenance and repairs of the buses. They currently do maintenance and repairs on the property of the buses, but they don't have a building to do any of those repairs in, so they're kind of out in nasty weather like this doing any type of repair.
And this may be more of a question for Ken, but are you agreeable or is the district agreeable to the, any of the conditions that either the planning commission or historical commission mentioned in the reviews?
We're fine with all of those, yes.
Okay. Nicole, anything more from you?
I don't believe so unless you have any questions.
Do any of the board members have any questions, or do you want to ask Paul if he has any questions at the outset?
No, I don't have any questions. We did the sketch plan review, and we just noted that it was on historical property, and we are aware that there is significant deterioration in the property.
I just wanted to make the comment that I will be abstaining from voting on this. I do happen to work for the developer, and it would be a conflict of interest, so I will not be voting.
I don't see any other comments from the board.
Is the district typically under the municipality's planning code, the district, the township has a day after it renders its verbal decision to issue a written decision? Is the district agreeable to waiving that provision, subject to us providing you a written notice within a day of what our decision is, but then the full findings of fact and conclusions of law within the next 45 days?
Yes, we're agreeable to that.
Okay. So with that, we can, is there any public comment as to the application? Sure. Let's let them talk off the record and then they... Ms. Guerrero, we're back on the record now. Am I right? No questions or comment from you? Understand. Any more questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the evidentiary portion of the record. We'll admit all of the exhibits into the record as well, and we can now entertain a motion by the board, presuming it's agreeable, to approve the application, subject to the applicant complying with the Historical Commission, Township Engineer, and Planning Commission reviews.
I'll make the motion as stated by Mike there.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And again, confirming that Martha recused herself. Okay. With that, we'll close the conditional use hearing. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Yeah. You're still on. All right, I'm going to call the regular business meeting to order then. This is the January 23rd, 2025, regular business meeting for the Board of Supervisors of Skookel Township. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Going down the roll call, we have Martha Majewski, Danielle Juwenn, Bob Cooney, John Callahan, and myself, Mark Donovan, for the board, and we have Lori Getz as our manager, Mike Cruddy as our fresh new counsel from down the block, and Paul Bettinger's our engineer. We also have Valentina Mader taking all the notes for... Oh, Paul is gone. And we did have an executive session to discuss personnel litigation and property acquisition prior to the meeting, January 23rd. Right on to the regular business meeting consent agenda. I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, January 6th, 2025, reorg meeting and regular business meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Just to make note for the minutes, this is actually a motion to approve those and to ratify any actions taken by the board at that meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To the treasurer's report and payment of bills. I'll make a motion. We accept the treasurer's report for the period ending December 31st, 2024. Do I have a second here?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, for a period ending December 31st, 2024, we had a general fund balance of just over $5 million, down about $1 million from the previous month, which is exactly to be expected for the last month of the year, and all of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion. We approve dispersments dated January 23rd, 2025. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
No subdivision land development, no old business, on to new business. Item number one, I'll make a motion. We approve the Police Department promotion of Officer Chris Minyonia to corporal effective January 23rd, 2025. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All righty, any commentary on that? Questions, comments, concerns?
Congratulations, Chris.
Yeah, congratulations to Chris for his inevitable promotion. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I'll make a motion. We ratify approval of the Roads Department promotion of Robert Falconstein to Assistant Roadmaster effective January 1st, 2025. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And a discussion on 2025 projects, goals, workshop topics.
So, this is just usually what we tackle at the first workshop of the year. We don't have to get super in-depth at this meeting, but I just wanted to throw it out for ideas, concepts for the board, so we can start mapping out our workshop schedule for the rest of the year. Topics I have are the Route 23 sidewalk project that we're planning for March, Freedom Trail. We're intending to regroup on that, as well as any other trails. Park master plan, that would be the Sedgley Farms planning process that we're going to start working on. Grant planning for 2025, and ordinance review and updates that we've been collecting over the years that we want to start tackling. So, if anybody else has any other topics or priorities in there, now Sedgley, part of that, we've discussed, we talked about potentially having a presentation at the February meeting from a local soccer club.
And that doesn't have to be necessarily tied to Sedgley Farms?
No, just in general, park future, field use, open space use, yeah.
They want to get in front of the board and express the, you know, I guess, the needs from the soccer club. The reason that this came to their attention was because of the purchase, but it's not necessarily tied to the Sedgley Farms purchase.
So, I guess that begs the question, the timing of that. I would much rather have our discussion about the future of Sedgley Farm and what the public wants before we talk to anyone about a soccer field. That's just my opinion.
I disagree. I do think that we have to take all the input from all the community members, and the soccer club does represent a lot of community members in Skookel Township, and while it's not necessarily tied to the use of Sedgley Farms, it is a large piece of open space that we have acquired, and I think it's worth hearing from them. It's part of our input.
I like the idea of hearing from them and anybody that has ideas what the use could be there, but I agree, it's a good idea to get the public to weigh in first, take their pulse, because I don't want to jump in front of them and say, hey, we're thinking about what to do with it already. I like to have the public weigh in and then come back and say, let's start bringing this club in, several others in that might have ideas of use.
But the club is the public. They represent, I mean, I'm not saying that we give them any sort of preferential treatment, but they represent hundreds of families in Skookel Township.
But there's also other clubs that represent all kinds of...
And they should also be entitled to come before the board and discuss their organizations. I don't know why we would exclude them either.
I'm not saying to exclude them. I'm just saying I think the timing to talk to them before we talk to the general public...
I don't think timing matters. We're going to talk to everyone. We're making no commitments out of that direction. Doesn't matter, we're not going to make any commitment to the soccer club or to the public before we hear everyone. Doesn't really matter what order we go in.
We're setting ourselves up for, to me, it's optics, for one thing, but it's, you know, the residents of Skookel Township that are paying the tax for this. I'd love to have town halls where we bring them in and say, guys, you know, this is what we did with Valley Park. We all sat down, we looked at the property, we started kicking around ideas, because if the general direction is we want, you know, the majority wants to go in this direction, let's bring experts in that hit those points is my, my thoughts on it.
It sounds to me like they just want to come in and express a need for soccer space, and that doesn't necessarily tie to this property. I don't really believe, in the grand scheme of things, the timing truly matters, because as has already been said, y'all are going to talk to like literally anyone who wants to come in and talk, and it could be now, it could be in three months, it could be in six months while we're still doing park planning, and it really, the optics, I mean, you're going to talk to literally anyone who comes in here, so I mean, it's not, as long as the focus of the conversation stays on the need for soccer and not a conversation about using Sedgley Farm for it, I think that's perfectly fine.
But I think they already said that. They sold the purchase. They want to come in and talk to us about a pitch.
No, 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 no.
I don't want to be pitched anything right now. I want the public to pitch what they want.
Bob, that's not, that's not true. They've given a presentation to Phoenixville Borough, they've given a presentation to East Pike Land, they're giving a presentation to all of the neighboring communities in which their families live in about the need for soccer fields.
And wherever it lands, like wherever they end up, or if they don't find a place, they just, it sounds more like they want to just say like, there is a need, there's a need for soccer, there's a need for baseball space, there's a need for some other stuff. The rugby team was having trouble finding a place earlier. I mean, you're probably going to get a few pitches from other clubs too that just are, this is a good time for them to bring it up.
Is it the best use of our time with the time we have to talk about, to start with the priorities of getting the people in, getting, taking the pulse of the people? If we're going to have workshops, do we want to put one in the front of the line that I think would be better after the people get to weigh in? I mean, we only have so many workshops this year. We want to get in front of it. We want to get the people involved.
Do you have anything else scheduled for February?
No. We were going to discuss, yeah, we were going to discuss the sidewalk project.
I think timing wise, unless you guys have, unless you guys have other ideas for February, then this would be good timing, because then it's not overlapping with other things, and you don't end up with meetings that run until midnight.
How soon can we start the meetings to bring the people in and take their polls?
For park planning, or for whatever.
To me, that's the top priority. We just spent a ton of money.
I mean, we can have a discussion at the February meeting amongst the board about the way you want to go about that planning. I see the, so we can, we could start those conversations that night. I think that the presentation, as I understand it, that they want to make is separate from that and would be, would end up being handled separately anyway. They're making presentations to express a need for space. Whether or not the board wants to entertain that for Sedgley Farms anyway is a decision that you'll make down the line, especially because we've discussed going through a whole master plan, planning process, which is going to take, we have to start those discussions and put an RFP out, hire a landscape architect to do a master planning process. At which point, they would also solicit feedback from the, I mean, they'll handle all of it. They'll talk to the community, they'll bring people in, they'll run the meetings, they'll talk to the soccer clubs and the football clubs and the baseball clubs, and they'll decide what the best use is, and well, really what the needs are. So, we, it's up to the board. You can, they've asked. Well, I don't actually have an official request to be on the agenda, but generally speaking, when people make requests to be on workshop agendas, we just schedule it as we can accommodate it.
Actually, do I need to ask a question, or do I make for a public comment at this time?
Is the question specific to what we're talking about?
To this in part, because...
You'll have to come to the microphone, Karen.
Yeah.
So, something that occurred at the Harris Hill property for the Phoenixville area school district is that they discovered parts of arsenic in the soil because it had been used as a farm previously. So, one thought is if we're going to be having kids and doing sports and falling in the ground and maybe getting injured, maybe something that has to be checked is arsenic levels, lead levels in the soil.
The only time you'd have to do that is if you're disturbing the soil. I'm very familiar with the East Pike Land project. I work in East Pike Land, so they found that doing soil testing, it was a couple of feet underground, and now they're moving stuff around, so they have to cover it with two feet of soil and everything like that. Unless you, but arsenic, for example, doesn't move underground with water movement. It only moves when you dig it up and move it. So, those kind of things...
There's any construction.
Right. But if we, I think if we start, I think if we start digging into the soil on this property in the future, I think we'll have to test, because any development of this property will involve testing of the soils. We'll probably do like, we'll probably do like testing in test pits.
Okay, so I just want...
It's just a part of the whole plan, yeah.
So, any issue with having the soccer club coming on February and opening up a public comment? Just doing both in one shot? We're probably going to want to have the public comment multiple times anyway to talk.
Prelim first round in February.
If future Farmers of America had called me up and said they'd like to talk about the need for farming in a township, I would say yes. I don't know why we would exclude them.
Well, I'm not suggesting, I'm not, I never suggested excluding them. I just thought that we would want to talk to our public before we started talking to individual experts about what their needs are. That's, that was my only question, and it doesn't matter to me. I just, you know...
If it excites the public enough to get them out here, I think that's great, because it would be nice to fill seats in here. Thank you for coming, all of those who have come, but yeah, it would be nice to fill more seats in here. So, if it does engage the public early, that would be great.
I mean, that's the other side of it. This could rile the public in a negative way, because if active recreation is discussed on a property that has limited access, it's going to open Pandora's box of can we access through East Phillips? Should we look at opening that up as a throughway? I mean, this is something to think about, because that has serious access issues, that property.
Well, that's all going to come up in the master planning process anyway. Every avenue will be explored, including opening East Phillips probably, for access for that property only, and then whatever it's done with that in the future, I mean, that's, it's just a matter of like maximizing the use of the property for the public's benefit, and whatever that entails, we have to find that out, and that's a long 12 to 18 month process.
I have a suggestion. Procedurally, why don't we, like I said, I don't have an official request from this organization to be on an agenda. Why don't we ask them to submit to us an official request to be on the workshop agenda along with either a summary or a copy of the presentation that they intend to make to the board, and then we can discuss, we can discuss when they get put on the agenda at, when we normally do it at the next business meeting. So, that will be a topic on the February business agenda where we'll plan out the topics for the workshops. They should submit something to me in advance anyway, and then you guys, everyone can see what it is that they're looking to propose. So, he didn't reach out to you? Because he had asked me, and then I told him to coordinate with you, and he didn't? He didn't? Okay. I haven't gotten anything. Okay. No. So, why don't we handle it that way?
Yeah, sounds good.
Perfect. Any other topics for workshops, ideas, projects that we didn't?
Why are you smiling again?
Because you're grinning over there.
Oh.
I got, I'm just going to go down the line. I got nothing.
Did I say, did I mention a topic and not remember?
Well, actually, when you were just smiling, I thought to myself, oh, textile recycling. So, that's another one we could add on.
That's a good one.
That was what I was going to mention, and then the classic ban too, kind of got dropped at the end of last year.
I was thinking, I had that in mind when I added the ordinance discussion on the agenda, but I was thinking that specifically, yeah.
Okay, cool.
that we both saw, is it brought to mind electronics recycling and how there are not enough electronic recycling events. Maybe that would be something that we could explore this year.
Well, we don't really need an event.
So, we used to do that and we would partner with actually East Pikeville on an annual basis, sometimes every two years to do that. But it got canceled most recently because Goodwill started doing it for free.
Oh, you can drop stuff off at Goodwill? Really?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they just put that out. So, we, yeah, so we ended up canceling the event, but we did use to do that.
You know, I know that you guys have posted this before, but it sounds like residents just don't remember or don't realize it.
Yeah.
Can you guys post that again?
Sure.
Just because it's-
Put it on the website.
This is something that's free. You can drop anything off at Goodwill. They will take broken Christmas lights, they'll take TVs, they'll take old stereo equipment, they will take anything with a plug.
Do they partner, they partner with an organization? Because it doesn't, doesn't just end up in the dumpster.
Yes, they do. And Chester County Solid Waste Authority has information on who they are partnering with and I don't remember who it is.
Anything else? Well, obviously, our municipal complex renovation will be one.
When is the deadline for the content for our next paper newsletter?
Say it's next week.
Is that next, it's next month?
Yeah.
But it's before March?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I don't have, we'll check the date. It's sometime in-
So, I think end of February.
Yeah.
I have an idea for an article that I would like to meet with the two of you about.
Great.
But I want it to be a surprise.
We would love that. Ooh. Okay. We love content and we like surprises. Probably from you, I would probably like it.
But from no, but no one else on the board?
Depends who it is.
We've had enough surprises to last us all a lifetime other than-
Oh, yeah.
I was just saying, you're on-
We do need ads. Every, every time, we are constantly getting, Hometown Press? Hometown Press is struggling to get advertisers. They're just not getting as many. So, they, they just kind of reached out to us with a desperate plea of if you can spread the word that if anybody wants to advertise in the newsletter because that's obviously how we, that's how it gets paid for to go out, so.
Do they have salespeople?
Yeah, but I just think less people are placing ads in publications like that.
They're a small outfit too, so they have trouble managing the-
Are they, are they expensive? Is that the issue?
What's their name?
Hometown Press.
Hometown Press.
You know, we have that, the whole commons that's full of doctors. I can't believe that none of them would-
Maybe they don't know about it.
Okay.
They don't know. They don't know.
Whatever.
I'll post it on Facebook as well, see if they-
See if they can get any ads. Yeah.
What's, what was that?
I'll post it.
We'll put it out.
Hey, you might get some contractors like-
Okay. Okay.
I think that's it for topics.
I don't have any announcements on my plate here, so it's public comment. If you'd like to come, please, if you'd like to speak, come up to the mic and state your name and then we can go from there.
So, Karen Guerrero again. So, basically, one thought I had for suggestions is a liability waiver for events and that may occur at the township. I don't know whether-
Well, you have, you have the right solicitor here for that.
Yes, yes. So, basically, most volunteer events I attend has the liability waiver, but our township hasn't had any. And actually, volunteers have come and asked us to sign the waiver. So, maybe that would be-
Okay. I'll talk to Lori and Valentina and we'll jump into that.
Okay, that would be good. So, and then one more thing. Now, going to the budget, the open space grant funding, is that a definite or a maybe? The 500 K that's on the budget?
Oh, in the, the open space budget? That's grant funding that we may, that we're intending to apply for.
Okay. So, when are you going to be applying?
Over the course of the year.
Okay. Okay. And then I also noticed a new line item regarding the culture and recreation. What kind of events?
That was a new line item for 2024 and that was what funded our movie night.
Okay. So, so it's going to be for movie nights?
Community events, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Small, small things like that.
Jerry, did you come here to talk to us?
No, just to-
Check it out.
Nice to see your face.
It's good to see you here. Yep. So, I don't see any other public comment then. Thank you for attending. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Third.
Aye.
Grant soccer.[1777.25]